Ron.
Hello, hello?
Okay, now. Hello. Additions, deletions, modifications, are there any?
No, sir.
Next is announcement and presentation. Noel Martinez, President and CEO of the Palm Beach North Chamber of Commerce. Would you please come to the podium? Hi, Noel.
Hello.
How are you?
Great, how are you?
Right on, I'm good.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Mayor Council, Mr. Ferris. We are beyond excited to be bringing ArtiGrau back to the city of Palm Beach Gardens. And we are, I'm here today with Ms. Bianca Cologne, who is our ArtiGrau Director. And we're here to officially introduce ourselves. I know you all are pretty familiar with the event, but we're here to officially introduce the event to you. Celebrating over 36 years, ArtiGrau Fine Arts Festival has grown from this small, local, little arts festival to a nationally recognized fine arts festival that attracts tens of thousands of art lovers and collectors from all over the United States. ArtiGrau is going to be held President's Day Weekend, as you know, at Gardens North, North County District Park. That's going to be February 13th and 14th. This new location is going to allow us to really spread out the event and make sure that it's a socially distant event. And we are absolutely committed to making sure that we have a safe and welcoming festival and will have many safer measures in place, as you can imagine, to make sure that our volunteers, patrons, and guests are all safe. As you know, the festival is produced by the Palm Beach North Chamber of Commerce, and it's presented by the Henley Foundation. ArtiGrau was recently named one of the top 10 fine arts festivals in the country and showcases juried expedition of quality artwork from over 250 artists. ArtiGrau also features a youth art competition, Arti Kids Zone, and a live entertainment, and of course, tons of amazing food. The festival benefits many nonprofits as well. Just in the past 10 years, ArtiGrau has raised over $300,000 for youth art programs and local nonprofits. And lastly, ArtiGrau has a big economic impact on the area. It is estimated that the festival has over $2.8 million worth of economic impact and will bring it to the city. We are beyond proud to bring that to the city of Palm Beach Gardens. So I want to thank Mr. Ferris and the rest of the team at the city for making this happen. They have been an absolute joy to work with. You should all be very, very proud of them, as I know you really are. So, thank you so much, and I'll take any questions if anyone has any questions.
I don't have any questions right now, guys. We picked the location, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I guess the one question is, how many people will be allowed in each day? Do you know, based on estimations?
Yes, we're, right now, our initial estimation is about 8,000 a day. Luckily, it's a gated festival, so we're able to control how many people are coming in and out, and that's something that we will be paying close attention to.
We having live music?
Absolutely, sir.
Good. Looking for, oh, I won't be here.
That's a shame.
Yeah, I know.
We'll keep you busy, though, until then.
We'll be here twice for you.
That's okay. Anything else, guys?
No, I just want to say thank you. It's a boon to the city, with, you know, fill up some of our hotel rooms that need it and bring a lot of economic prosperity that we really need right now, to our local businesses especially. So we're appreciative to that and for coming into our beautiful North District Park as well, which we can't wait to show off. People keep asking for more trails, and they don't realize we have something absolutely stunning in their backyard, ready to go. So you guys are giving us a chance to showcase that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
It's going to be great. Noel, are you doing any additional exposure on the corridor to the businesses to let them know that they might be getting a flood of traffic during that week?
Well, we have absolutely, yeah, we've started to contact a lot of our local businesses, especially Chamber members. You know, I think it's, it's a big deal. Everyone's talking about us in the move. I think it's pretty hard not to see that ArtiGrau has moved into the city of Palm Beach Gardens everywhere you look. I mean, tons of media have picked it up, so we will be making, you know, we will absolutely be communicating that to them, but that's great, that's a great problem to have, right? We really want those businesses and restaurants to be packed that weekend, and we're looking forward to it.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. Nice meeting you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Charlotte Przynski, Leeser Services Administrator, would you come up, please? Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Charlotte Przynski, Leeser Service Administrator. And Wendy Tatum, your Director of Tennis and Pickleball. It's a privilege tonight to be here to share with you the United States Tennis Association Member Organization of the Year. That is a national recognition that Wendy and her staff have received for our tennis center. The award was actually given at the end of 2019, but we couldn't receive it because of COVID. So eventually, the USTA decided to do it virtually. So we'd like to share with you tonight that award ceremony and give Wendy and her team the due recognition that they deserve for the amazing job that they do. So bear with me as I pull up the video. And this happened about a month ago? Yeah, about a month ago, we were able to celebrate this. That's not it.
We don't want to see that one.
No, that's not it. I'm in the wrong spot. I apologize. Here we go. This is the correct one.
And here to present is former Top Four Player, three-time Grand Slam Mixed Doubles Champion, and Women's Olympic Doubles Gold Medalist and Singles Bronze Medalist, Xena Garrison.
Hi, thanks, Mary, and what an honor to be here to present the USTA Member Organization of the Year Award. Connecting with the community is so important, now more than ever. And the fact that Palm Beach Gardens is a public facility and is available to everyone that wants to participate is even more incredible. Hi, Wendy, congratulations. You and your team are doing an amazing job bringing the sport to those in your area. After such a tough year, how are you doing it?
Well, Xena, I'm telling you, I think that being a, such a tough year, we are that staple of smile and safe. You walk through their door and nothing has changed. Anytime anybody walks through the door, our theme is "We Are Family," and it starts with love. So, we are bringing people in that played there for years, and we're getting players that haven't played ever, because it seems like it's the sport to do right now, and we offer that sense of security and that sense of, "Let me try it. If I've never played, you help." So we've got all the spectrums going from, you know, people that have never played before to our regulars coming back going, "Ah, you guys are here."
Well, what makes Palm Beach Gardens so special? And then I also heard in that, in the intro, that you're looking for people. I'm looking for a job.
Come on. Hey, you're in, we'll take you. Yes, that would be awesome. What makes it so special, I believe, is what you saw in that video. It's, it's my staff, it's the staff. When you walk in the door, you feel it, that's the vibe.
I just want to know, what makes this award special to you? Because I know the, the work and hard work that you have to put into, so how does it make it special for you?
For me personally, it's just the recognition of that we're doing it right, that we keep moving forward in what we're doing. And by adding the inclusion, which, and the adaptive programs, which have been on my radar forever, that those are growing like crazy as well. So, and then the, getting the new clubhouse that they just built for us here says, "We're in the right direction." The city is supporting us 100% in what we do. USTA is backing us always 100%. So, that's, that's what keeps us, and that's what we're most proud of, is what we're doing.
Well, congratulations again. I, I have to get over there and see the facility, but all the best to everyone in Palm Beach Gardens. You guys have done a wonderful job.
Thank you so much, and we, we really are very proud of this award, and we thank you for granting it to us and the USTA for acknowledging what we do here. We will continue to do it, we're not stopping. So, that award specifically is due to the hard work of Wendy. She has an amazing staff, but it takes the leadership from the top. And just to remind everyone, we were here in front of you a year ago when she won the USPTA Manager of the Year. So, we praise Wendy, we love her for what she does and her commitment. So if you all can come down, we'd like to take a picture with this year's recognition award. And while you're all coming down, they referenced a video that we did show you about six months ago that was the entry for the award. So, but we have that up on our website, if anyone would like to see it.
Thank you, Charlotte. I'd like to call Casey Mitchell, Director of Golf. To the podium, please. Hi, Casey.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, Casey Mitchell, Director of Golf at Sand Hill Green Golf Club. And my presentation tonight is on the 115-acre parcel. The parcel that is just adjacent to the current 18-hole facility that we run at Sand Hill was earmarked several years ago for golf expansion. It will be accessible off of North Lake Boulevard through our current facility and will also have access through Avenir in the future. We conducted a market study with True Club Solutions, which is a division of Trune Golf. The initial meeting took place on Tuesday, May 19th, which included golf and maintenance, administration, the Nicholas Group, who is also doing some conceptual design work for us, and the regional TCS team. Several other meetings took place, including a site visit to Palm Beach Par Three. We were looking at several options, but a Par Three is what we ended up making the recommendation for, so we did a site, a site visit to Palm Beach Par Three to kind of see what they had done and meet with their administration over there. The market analysis highlights, so there is limited availability for public golf in Palm Beach County. There's a total of 73 facilities within a 20-mile radius. Only 21 of those are public access. The population growth in Palm Beach Gardens with Westlake and Avenir is expected at 6.4% growth through 2024. Average spending on social, recreational, and health club memberships within a 10-mile radius is expected to grow 15% over the next five years. The current facility also has a very positive rating. We have several members and guests who are repeats and come back on a, on a weekly, if not daily, basis. And we do have very good track record with the current facility, which is revenue positive. We're anticipating about 40,000 to 45,000 rounds every year. Last year was kind of an anomaly with COVID, where we did have to close for five weeks. But in previous years before last year, we were right somewhere between 40,000 and 45,000 rounds. And the Avenir development is expected to have roughly 3,900 homes with 4,000, 400,000 square feet of office space. So the market study also had the, the second component to it, which was the Nicholas Group. They took a look at what we could fit on the site, how we would access the site, what trends were popular in golf right now, and kind of gave us, along with what we were working with, an idea of what would best be suited for develop, development of that property. So our proposal is for a Par Three golf course with a 19th shootout hole, which we'll tie back into our programming later, a satellite clubhouse, a grass driving range, instructional bays and areas both on the golf course or on the driving range, as well as short game areas, and a putting course, we'll go through those individually. So the 18-hole Par Three course was our main option. It fits very nicely there, we could get about 3,100 yards out of it. Some of the ways that we can program this, Scott, who runs the Minor League Golf Tour, does a shootout right now at Palm Beach Par Three, is very popular with the minor league tour players, to do shootouts and club tournaments internally with our members and residents, nine wine and dine events to tie back a food and beverage component, parent junior tournaments, and then something like they do at the Masters. They have a, a, the Wednesday before the Masters every year, they do the Par Three tournament. So it would attract both your novice golfer, who has not played before, it's a really great opportunity for them to get into the game, as well as those who play on a regular basis. It takes significantly less time to play, so the trends of the industry right now are going towards just a few hours. So come hit a bucket of balls, maybe chip and putt a little bit, but for those who don't have four and a half or five hours to commit to going to play golf, the Par Three certainly is more attractive. The holes would range somewhere in the vicinity of 60 to 220 yards. We would have the ability for elevation changes and incorporate several design variations into the course with different tee boxes, the different lengths, the water features, bunkers, and movements to the greens. The island green, we kind of came up with this concept, something like TPC Sawgrass. The 17th hole is an island green. We do a shootout for charity right now, we just re-implemented that since with COVID, we couldn't have a proximity out there. But we've raised thousands of dollars for our local charities. This, this month alone, we were able to donate $500 to five different charities. So it's $5 to enter, and once we have a winner, basically, this, this, this go around since COVID, there's no proximity, you hit the green, and you're entered in to win a summer membership or a gift card. The rest of the money that we collect goes to the charities. So this would be a nice opportunity to have kind of a feature hole and do both from the Par Three and the current course that we have without slowing play down. This is just a very simple concept, this isn't anything that's been designed to be implemented, but just to kind of give you a, a general layout of where we are right now, our current facility is located just in, in this area over here. So our 14th hole, our 14th hole would be here, 15th hole would be here, 13 would be going out this way. So 18-hole, an 18-hole Par Three with a 19th hole island green, the putting course, the driving range, and some other practice facilities, both at the back of the range and then general use up towards the, the public side of the driving range would fit. We also have this area here, which has been earmarked for additional passive recreation amenities that can be added in the future. And this is just a, this is TPC Sawgrass, just to give everybody who, who doesn't play golf just a feel of what that would look like. So the clubhouse would be about 10,000 square feet, it would be in close proximity to your returning holes, so the first ninth, 10th, and 18th holes to oversee play, most of the play, and the turn times, if we need to send somebody out for just nine holes, or if somebody's running late. Also, it would be in close proximity to the putting green, which would be something we could use to program for small juniors who are just getting into the game, and the driving range. So it would include the golf shop, the check-in facilities, the restrooms or scaled locker facilities, golf cart storage, administrative offices, scaled food and beverage options, and flex space or storage. This is just a rendering, this is actually Martin County Municipal, this is what they were proposing, this is just to give an idea of what could, what it could look like. And when we get to the driving range, you'll understand why I used their, their renderings. So the driving range, we are proposing a two-story driving range, very scaled Topgolf or Drive Shack, so it's taking into consideration all of the players who are either just getting into the game or have not yet gotten into the game, but they like that atmosphere. It's very non-traditional golf, so it's very inclusive for somebody who's just picking up a club or family-oriented golf. It would be north and south facing, right now, our current aqua range faces east, so we have some issues with the rising sun. The driving range is 150 yards wide, which is really important for the after-work golfers when they all come at the same time, 5:00, 5:30, and it gets really packed. So we'll be able to accommodate approximately 45 people at one time. And it'd be 300 yards long and lit for after, after hours or after it gets dark. And there's only a few places that do have lights on their driving range right now that can accommodate, that can accommodate night golf, if you will. North Palm Beach Country Club, John Prince Golf Center, and then obviously Drive Shack, which is off of Belvedere. The size allows for better turf conditions, so obviously, if you're going to come, you'll have a good experience, so that certainly allows us to jump rope the tees. The aqua range will still be active, we'll keep that in play for anybody who wants to play the current 18-hole facility and wants to go for a quick warm-up, but anybody who wants to have a good practice session would very likely go to our new driving range. And those who are going to warm up before they play the Par Three. Casual food and beverage options can create more of an inclusive golfing experience for the families, the birthday parties, the workoutings, and then the instructional north tee allows the public tee to remain open all the time. So it'd be a separate two-bay scaled training center that would be at the back of the range. It would allow for the use of TrackMan, our current operations, which we have, we would take those and we could, you know, transfer them back and forth, it wouldn't be the purchase of new equipment, it would just allow for use of the current equipment at both ranges. And then the short game instructional area would allow for pass holders and the general public to utilize the, the short game area while clinics are going on at the back of the range. So again, this is a Martin County Municipal Golf Course, this, this is their proposed clubhouse, and we are looking at something very similar, where it would be maybe 10 bays up top and 10 bays below, and it would be enclosed, so you could use it during inclement weather. The putting course would be roughly 35,000 square feet. This is very interesting, there's a few of them that are already built in the nation, but it would be 18 natural grass holes. So it'd kind of be like mini golf, but on actual turf. So incorporating rolls, valleys, plateaus, swales, knobs, landscaping to kind of create a unique experience there. And again, our juniors who are just starting out would, would be able to utilize this before they're ready to actually swing a club. Challenging and entertaining for all levels, again, a very inclusive environment for the families. And it could be an additional source of revenue with daily fee, daily play fees and global putting contests. PGA National does quite a few of these on their very large putting green out in front of their, their golf shop. This is Lake Marion Golf Course, theirs is, I think, roughly 32,000 square feet, again, just a conceptual to give you an idea of what it, what it might look like. The preliminary cost estimates are on the screen. The total for the project is about $14 million, that would be inclusive of everything that we just itemized through the, this presentation. So the 18-hole Par Three short game facility, the 35,000-square-foot putting green, the 19th shootout hole, the instructional building, short game facility at the back of the range, the clubhouse construction, driving range, the maintenance equipment, golf operations equipment, furniture, and fixtures, with a few, a few caveats. The maintenance equipment could be a potential cost savings, it was, it's in there as a purchase, but it could be leased, which is what we currently do, so there would be some cost savings there. Course construction, we could do concrete screenings versus formal cart paths, and then cost-sharing opportunities between what we have currently with staff and then the, the expansion. So there are some cost savings that we did not put in there, we wanted to be really conservative there, but there are some available. So our revenues and expenses, we've kept our rates between Palm Beach Par Three and Jupiter Dunes. We calculated the, the average daily rate at $37 in year one, with 1% growth year over year. The pro forma from TCS anticipates 25,000 rounds in year one with 5% growth in years two and three, then 2% growth from then on. The merchandise annual sales of 86,000 in year one with 3% growth. And then additional staffing needs would be a golf course supervisor, one head professional, eight contractual employees for maintenance, which is what we currently have, and then a part-time customer service representative would move to full-time. So then, the, the pro forma currently anticipates the net, a positive net cash flow of 350,000 in year one. Any questions?
Thank you. I don't have any right now. Mark, you have?
Just want to mention to you that the presentation is for Resolution Seven that you'll be dealing with later on tonight, and that Casey will remain here for questions at that time. Just wanted to get the presentation on. As you know, in the past years, we've had some criticism that these things that are late in the agenda, residents don't get to see, so we wanted to do the presentation upfront, where everyone can see it, and then we'll have our discussions, if that's your wishes, later when the resolution comes up.
So guys, do we agree to pause for a minute and wait till we readdress this at, whenever we get to it?
Will we get a presentation on the bonds themselves at the resolution?
I can't understand you.
Will we get a presentation on the bonds during the resolution?
Yes.
Yeah.
You'll get the financial presentation.
All right, so Casey, if we can just pause for a second, we'll move on through our agenda, and then we'll call you back up when we get to that point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is comments from the public. I have two comment cards for general discussion. Commissioner Maria Moreno, would you please come up and join us, please?
Wow, I get three minutes?
Isn't that weird?
It is.
Usually, when you're up here, it took all night.
I know. Yeah, it's not.
Just kidding.
Well, for the record, Commissioner Maria Moreno, I live here in the city of Palm Beach Gardens. I think I put my county address, 301 North Olive, on there. And for those that want to reach me, I do have a cell phone number, I mean, a, an office number of 561-355-2201, so if you want to call the Commissioner, that's the number to reach me at. I, this is my first time addressing you from this side of the podium, this is, this is fabulous, you all look wonderful, thank you for everything you do for our wonderful city. Ron, congratulations, a very well-deserved naming. And a mentor to all, I do have to say that I would not be where I am today if it hadn't been for you who took me under my wing, even before I was elected, while I was still unopposed. I remember coming into your office on a weekly basis just to learn what the city did, and you were a very, you, you still are a wonderful mentor, and I appreciate that.
I didn't get any of that.
I'm not going there.
Yeah, I know, forget about it.
But anyway, I just wanted to say a couple of things, I know you all are, are going to have lots of COVID reports in the future, and there is plenty of information out there. There's a really good link, I sent it to you today, and the link is basically the COVID-19 vaccine summary, and it has vaccine data right until 12 o'clock this morning. And I just want you all to know that of all of the counties that have received vaccines, Palm Beach County is the third in number in receiving vaccines, and so far, the county has administered over 52,000 vaccines. Number one is Dade County at 80, almost 85,000 vaccines, and number two is Broward at almost 62,000 vaccines. I do want to say thank you for, to the city, I do, I, I know that you all are administering some vaccines tomorrow, you are aiding with the Health Department. For those that don't know, the Florida Department of Health, comma, Palm Beach County, is not part of the Board of County Commissioners, not part of our flow chart, but they do, Alina Alonso, Dr. Alonso does give us a report, oh, I have 48 seconds. So I'm just going to move on. So Ron, I, I shared that with you, if you want to share that link, that would be great, you can put it up on the city's website, too. I also want to let you know that there will be a virtual hearing for the Florida Department of Transportation on State Road 7, you should also have this in your inbox. We do need people to participate, to let FDOT know their thoughts on State Road 7, it's very important for all of us. And I didn't realize it was on the agenda for later, and I probably won't be here, but as, I'm going to put on my professional golfer hat for I'm going to put on my professional golfer hat for a second and my firsty board hat and say, "Thank you for doing a par three, because if you want to grow the game of golf, you got to start in the simplest manner." And it's getting our kids involved who bring their parents. And if you can put them on a par-three golf course, and the general public who's playing on the regular golf course doesn't feel like they're taking up time, it's a wonderful thing. And if you're going to grow the game, you got to grow it with the kids and their families, and that's how you sustain the game. And as a professional golfer, it is way important, and it's a great sport for everybody because every age can do it together. So, thank you. And I want to just say thank you for all of you who supported me.
Congratulations.
Love you all. I love this family.
Thank you. We appreciate the information on the COVID. We're trying to be upfront with our community about that. I have another card. You didn't spell your name or your last name, so I'm going to go Rob Nanfro. Okay, is that right, Rob? Excellent, thanks. Can you come up and say your name and address for the record, please? And I understand you have several here, so you're only talking generally now. When we get to the topics on the ordinances, we'll call you back up, okay?
Not a problem.
Thanks. Go ahead.
Good evening to our city council and our city leadership. My name is Rob Nanfro. I reside at 10901 South Gardens Drive, Apartment 105. It's a pleasure to meet all of you and have this opportunity to speak. My wife and I think that Palm Beach Gardens is a paradise. It has many amenities, and the people are absolutely wonderful. I've never met a better group, to be honest. I've decided to become more actively involved because I, like you, want to use my expertise in a leadership position to preserve our signature city. I will work to the best of my ability with all of you to achieve this goal. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Rob.
You're welcome.
City manager report. Mr. Ferris?
Just a couple items to bring to your attention, if you would, please. First, it's my great pleasure to acknowledge one of our employees who's made a great achievement in her career. Charlotte Przynski is a surprise to you tonight. This is your life. No. Charlotte has earned the National Recreation and Parks Association Certified Park and Recreation Executive Certification. The certification is the highest level, the peak, of Parks and Recreation Professional can reach and achieve by passing a very strenuous exam. It's obtained by demonstrating leaderships in all aspects of management in Parks and Recreation Department. She has mastered policy development and management of fiscal property and personnel resources. She joins a very elite group of 250 across the nation, and she has saved my butt on many occasions, including today. Congratulations, Charlotte. Thank you very much for your expertise, your dedication, your devotion to this city and its citizens is just unparalleled. You do such a wonderful job. You're one of the people that I know I can always count on, and I thank you for that.
You know why we do that, Charlotte, to mainly embarrass you and to make sure Kumra knows he didn't win that award.
That's one.
Yeah, that's one you don't get.
At this time, I'd like to call Chief Breyer up to the microphone to talk to us about our vaccination program that we have been immersed in, and he and his staff are pulling together, along with him, Assistant Chief Cory Bissette, who is the mastermind behind all of this. I'll take the blame, you take the credit.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Council, for the record, Keith Breyer, Fire Chief. As you all know, that today we were able to successfully, within 10 minutes, sign up 200 residents for our vaccinations that will take place tomorrow at the Burns Road Community Center. So just so you know, we will administer all 200 of those vaccines in one day tomorrow with the help of all city staff. This has been typical of Palm Beach Gardens, where everybody has pulled up their sleeves and worked to do what's best for the residents. IT, Parks and Rec, Public Relations has all pulled together to make this happen for our residents. So we're very excited about that. We're excited to get this vaccine out. We wish it could be more. So you know, we have notified the Department of Health that we are willing to vaccinate 200 people a day, six days a week, for as long as it takes to vaccinate our residents. So we're very proud. On another note, I just want to say that I know that COVID-19 has affected everybody's daily life. However, I don't know that it's affected anybody as much as it has affected Chief Bissette. And I just want to publicly thank him for all of his hard work that he has done. You know, Cory is our infectious disease officer, not only for the fire department, but has stepped up to do it for the city, which means literally for the last 10 months, he's been on the phone nights, weekends, mornings, vacations, and has really worked hard to put this together. If it wasn't for his leadership and it wasn't for his direction, we wouldn't be able to give those vaccines. He was the one that was responsible for putting all those agreements in place so that we would have the ability to vaccinate our residents. So, you know, we're very lucky to have him, and I really, he had no idea I was doing this, by the way. But I just wanted to bring him up and just publicly thank him for all the hard work and leadership that he's done. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Ron?
That's my report for tonight.
I am going to make a comment on that, chief, and I know this council wants to be extremely transparent with the COVID distribution to the community. We see, we've had many emails come in from our community when we thought we weren't going to be able to do anything about it. So knowing that this is a tiny first step to vaccinating our seniors to begin with, it's nice to see that a door cracked with the county on some level, and we're able to show that we can be a hub for getting a large part, which Palm Beach Gardens is a large community in the county, getting our community. So it's nice to know this council, because we were all concerned on being transparent, that we weren't going to be able to do anything about it. And those words don't come out of our mouth very easily. So, great job for getting that done. That's why I'm saying that. And if my fellow council members want to say anything on that, because we were on pins and needles over this.
Me, too.
Other than that, did I cover it?
No, just, I think it's another example of the systems and organizations throughout the entire city that I'm always blown away. I thought I knew a little bit about what a great job we were doing, but more and more I realized everything, every system, and that, we talk about this a lot, that you guys were ready months ago, and it wasn't like you pulled it together just for this. This has been ready to go. So thank you. And I know as soon as we can get more, we'll have an efficient system to take care of our residents. So thank you very, very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, you know, it's very frustrating for everybody. We're getting emails. We send out reports. We try, we take the information that you guys supply us from the city manager, from Cory's daily reports on the number of 911 calls specifically, which is very nice to be able to share that with our residents. Of course, we're getting a lot of emails, calls, where's the vaccine, how do I get it? Some people are very angry, and I am, too. And I think we were over-promised, and now we can under-deliver through no fault of anybody's, really. Everybody is hurrying up to try to get there. I'm just grateful, and I want the residents to know, if anybody's actually paying attention, that the city is prepared to be a pod. We are working with our communities, with our neighbors, with the county and the state, the state of Florida Department of Health to be a pod, so we can actually administer. We can only get what we get. And I hope that weekly we'll get some. And I spoke with Representative Rick Roth today. He said that he understands the frustration, and he's hopeful and is very, very hopeful that we'll be seeing more rollout over the next few weeks. So please keep us informed as to what's going on, and let us help you send it out to residents. And for anyone listening, your city and your city staff are doing everything we can to help.
And most importantly, Maria's here as our ears and eyes to bring this information back to the county, because, you know, she represents us. And so I'm glad you're staying for at least, so you know our concerns on the COVID distribution. So I appreciate that, Commissioner. Anything else on this matter?
That's it. When we get the vaccine, we'll be ready. We've been ready, and, you know, with all of the city's help, we're ready to go. We just need vaccine.
Can't wait to get through this. But I'm glad our seniors are getting taken care of first. Next is consent agenda. Anybody going to pull anything?
Yes, I'd like to pull Resolution Two, Item F, and Resolution Six, Item I.
Can I get a motion and second to approve the consent agenda minus two and six?
I'd like a motion to approve the consent agenda minus two and six.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Patty, would you read the title for Resolution Two?
Resolution Two, 2021. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, providing conceptual approval for Project Gator Economic Development Incentives from the city, providing an effective date and further purposes.
We need a staff presentation? No. Motion and second to approve that item?
Well, before we make a motion to approve, I just wanted to, and I know this is just conceptual, and we as council don't have access to who these companies are, so this is really just to clarify that what we're doing here tonight is not giving money to people we don't know or to companies we haven't heard of, but really, we're just giving the city manager the ability to use this as a negotiating tool.
Yes, this is usual and customary. All councils face the same issue. This is a conceptual approval. It's not a final approval. Final approval will come back to you, and this could change between now and the time it comes back. That's why it's conceptual. It's a negotiating tool to help incentivize the businesses to locate here in the city of Palm Beach Gardens. You're given the information, is the only information we're allowed to give you by Florida state statutes, and we are bound by that. Those statutes are law, and they're not just suggestions, and I don't want to break the Florida state law. So this is more or less a signal to those companies that we're serious, and if you want to talk further, we'll talk further.
No, I appreciate it.
Because it is a competition with other cities, you understand.
Well, Palm Beach Gardens is a wonderful place, so we feel we should be able to lure them here. And, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I knew and the public was aware that this was just the starting point. So I have no other questions or comments.
Anybody else? Chelsea?
I just want to repeat what Ron said, that this will be brought back to city council again. This is just the beginning.
Yes, ma'am. That's what he said.
It is conceptual, so just everyone.
Yes, unless they go somewhere else.
Correct.
Rochelle?
One of the questions I had asked at the agenda review was how much was currently in the economic development fund? We have over 2.3 million in there. So even with both of these, the city is still in really good shape in order to lure other companies that can bring jobs to our area. So it doesn't divert from that too much.
All right, so I have no additional input on Resolution Two. So can I get a motion and a second to approve?
I'd like to make the motion to approve Resolution Two, 2021.
All in favor?
I'll second.
Oh, sorry. Got the second. I jumped, sorry. Who got the second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution carries for zero. Patty, would you read Resolution Six, please?
Resolution Six, 2021. Resolution, the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, providing conceptual approval for Project Branch Economic Development Incentives from the city, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Okay, so we're going to pause a second. I'm going to get a motion and a second to approve the item, then bring it back for discussion.
I'd like to approve, make a motion to approve Resolution Six, 2021.
And I'll second it. Discussion? Mark?
No, I'm good, thank you.
You're good? Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution carries for zero?
If I may make a note, it's National Glaucoma Awareness Month. Forgot to add that into the proclamations.
You're a dentist. How'd you know? All right, there are no quasi-judicial statements tonight, so Ordinance One, 2021, first reading. Patty, would you read the title on that, please?
Ordinance One, 2021. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter 38 Fire Prevention and Protection of the Code of Ordinances at Article Two, Fire Department Division Two, Firefighters Pension Fund by repealing subsection 38-652 and re adopting same as revised. To comply with the Secure Act, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter 38 Fire Prevention and Protection shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
And I'll open the hearing. Alan, you have a presentation, please?
Yes, sir. Good evening for the record, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Alan Owens, Finance Administrator, have a very brief presentation. Basically, this is just a housekeeping item that was brought to our attention, requested by the pension plan's attorney. And what they're doing is basically amending the plan to reflect recent changes in the Internal Revenue Code with regard to definition of required beginning date. And the only items that are changing are reflected here. Basically, the critical date is January 1 of 2020. If a participant does not attain the age of 70 and a half by January 1 of 2020, then the new law, which is age 72, then that kicks in. And then, once they attain age 72, the required beginning date would be April 1 following the calendar year that they reach that date. Now, just to point out, the same laws apply to the drop provision, but in this plan, the drop section just simply refers to Internal Revenue Code provisions and the section 38-65. As a practical matter, as you could probably imagine, this really is going to have, I can't foresee this ever being actually coming into play. I mean, you know, but the plan has to meet IRS qualifications in order to be a qualified plan. So their plan attorney, as well as a police plan attorney, have requested these changes. So we did receive an actual impact statement from the actuaries for the plan, Foster and Foster. They state that the plan change does not result in any cost impact, so there would be no cost by adopting this change. And that's simply it. We recommend approval of Ordinance One, 2021. If you have any questions?
All right, so I do not have any cards on this. Close the hearing. Motion and second to approve Ordinance One, 2021, please.
I'll make a motion to accept Ordinance One, 2021, on first reading.
I'll second.
All right, so now bring it back for discussion. So if we have any questions, let's ask Alan now.
It's just housekeeping, right?
It's all it is. Yeah.
It's just housekeeping, no cost impact, just required change that they have to do to comply with current IRS provisions.
So just to be repetitive and transparent, it's because the age changed to 72 from 70 and a half.
From 70 and a half.
And there's no cost impact, and it was reported by the actuary as well.
Correct.
So it's just, just nice to see you. Hello.
All right, hearing, no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, ordinance carries for zero. Ordinance Two, 2021. Patty, would you read the title on that?
Ordinance Two, 2021. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter 50 Police of the Code of Ordinances at Article Three, Police Officers Retirement Trust Fund by adopting new subsection 50-62A1, further amending Chapter 50 by repealing subsection 50, 132B2, and re adopting same as revised, further amending Chapter 50 by repealing subsection 50-152D3, and re adopting same as revised. All to comply with recent amendments to the Internal Revenue Code, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter 50 Police shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing effective date and further purposes.
Alan?
Okay. Again, as with Ordinance One, these are the same required changes due to the changes in the Internal Revenue Code. I'll just go over the changes very quickly here. Again, it's the same idea, the age 70 and a half to age 72. And if they, a member did not attain the age of 70 and a half by January 1 of 2020, then the new age would apply. In this plan, they do have to amend the section with respect to distributions from the drop program, because their attorney spells out the ages in the section. They have different attorneys for each plan, so it's just a matter of style, stylistic changes, how they write their plan documents. So that's the only change from Ordinance One. Again, there's no, they have a different actuary, Gabriel Roder and Smith. And again, in their opinion, these changes would have no cost impact to the plan.
All right, I have no comments, cards on this. I'm gonna close the hearing. Could I get a motion in second to approve Ordinance Two, 2021?
Make the motion to approve Ordinance Two, 2021, on first reading.
I'll second it. Discussion on this particular housecleaning topic?
No.
All right, hearing no further? Hearing no further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ordinance Two, Twenty-One, 2021, carries four zero? Ordinance Three, 2021. Patty, would you read the title?
Ordinance Three, 2021. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving an update to its comprehensive plan in accordance with the mandate set forth in Section One Sixty-three point three-one-seven-seven Florida statutes, pursuant to a city-initiated update that provides for the annual update to the city's five-year capital improvement schedule and the Palm Beach County School Board summary of capital improvement schedule with the capital improvements element, providing that the data as amended or revised shall be substituted for and replace the existing data in the capital improvements element, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Open the hearing. Dawn, presentation, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Dawn Sonniborn with the Planning and Zoning Department. This item is also a house cleaning, housekeeping item, this one with our comprehensive plan. This is something that we do annually. Once our budget is adopted, we amend our comprehensive plan, the capital improvement element. There's two tables in there. One is the five-year capital, schedule of capital improvements, and the other one is the school board's capital improvements program. Again, it's just housekeeping in nature, and those two tables will be updated. It's all according to the Florida statutes that require that. And we have noticed this in the paper, and staff does recommend approval. This was heard at the December eighth Planning and Zoning Board Appeals Meeting, and they recommended approval.
All right, I have no cards on this. I'm gonna close the hearing. Can I get a motion and a second to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance Three, 2021.
All right, discussion, guys, on this particular topic? Housecleaning goes quick.
It sure does.
Doesn't affect the community.
It's gotta be done.
It needs to be done. Mark, are you good on this particular?
Yeah, I'm great on it. I just, it's just interesting, and it's nice to see the five-year plan. So when you look at the study, and you look at the charting as to what the future goals are, and assuming the funding is going to be there, how the city is going to utilize its funding to make sure our, our, our capital improvement projects are funded properly and that they're gonna make sure that they're in the best interest of the residents. So I, I encourage everyone to look at it. It's kind of a neat way to, to see what, what the future is. So thanks.
You wanna keep going on that? All right, no further discussion, I assume? Mark? All in favor?
I'm sorry, Mayor, we need a second.
Did we not get a second on that?
No, I.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Yep.
Thought we seconded it before. Okay, so we got a second. Chelsea's a second?
Happy to be.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance carries four zero?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance Fourteen, 2020. Patty, would you read the title?
Ordinance Fourteen, 2020. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter Seventy-eight Land Development Regulations at seven, section Seventy-eight dash one fifty-nine, permitted uses, minor and major conditional uses, and prohibited uses at Table Twenty-One. Permitted, conditional, and prohibited use chart by permitting laboratory dental or medical as a minor conditional use in the general commercial CG one zoning district, adding new note forty-seven point two to both the laboratory dental or medical use and the office professional and business use, and modifying subsection J to add new note forty-seven point two, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter Seventy-eight Land Development shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
And I'll open the hearing. Has anything changed since the first reading?
There are no substantive changes.
Do we need to, we debated this last time. Do we need any other presentation on this, you guys? As we went over this, what's, we agreed to it. All right, I'm gonna close the hearing. Can I get a motion in second to approve? And I'll listen, between the masks and the screens, I kinda miss some things.
We have to raise our hands or something.
No, just, might have been me on that one.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance Fourteen, 2020.
I'll second it, actually. Hearing, no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Carries four zero? Resolution Seven, 2021. Patty, would you read the title?
Resolution Seven, 2021. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed fourteen million dollars City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida Public Improvement Bonds, Series Two Thousand Twenty-One, to finance the cost of an eighteen-hole par-three golf course and related facilities, approving the award of the Series Two Thousand Twenty-One bonds by negotiated sale, fixing the parameters for the maturity interest rate, redemption provisions, and other details with respect to the Series Two Thousand Twenty-One bonds, designating the city as the paying agent and registrar for the Series Two Thousand Twenty-One bonds, providing an effective date and further purposes.
I think the city manager had some input on this particular topic, and I wanted to put him in right here after Patty, so we could get that on the record.
Thank you. I appreciate your indulgence. There seems to be some confusion, misinformation that's being passed out around the community electronically through some website and social media about this project. And I would just like to bring some information to light as far as facts are concerned, instead of people's opinion of other people's opinions, which are generally not based upon facts. Apparently, there's some discussion that this is a new project, nobody knows anything about, the public doesn't know anything about it. The public was never involved, and I would just like to bring things up to date so people understand that there was quite an elaborate public process involved in this golf course. I've been involved with the Vavas property before it was even owned by Avenir, so I have a very long history, even with the Vavas family, when I came here in the year 2000 with a lawsuit and everything else that was going on in those days. Then when it was sold over to the, the Avenir folks from Landstar, we began discussions way back prior to 2013, when we saw the first, I believe it was, master plan that Avenir brought forth. And in our negotiations, in that master plan back in 2013, there's a section here that indicates it's going to the city for a golf course. And then again, under their land use proposal in June of twenty-eight, of June twenty-eighth, 2013, it's still there, the provisions for land for recreational use at that time. As a result of the negotiations and the proposals, directed staff to go out and talk to the users of the golf course and find out what they would want, should we acquire this land to the west of the existing golf course, to see what the needs of the users were. That happened in February of 2013. And it was quite an extensive report that was given by the citizens. Just to let you know, a couple of comments, which are kind of ironic. Their comments were, there was a general consensus among the workshop participants that the existing golf course should be expanded and enhanced to meet a broader civic and recreation needs of both existing and future residents. Was also consensus that the existing natural rural character of the golf course should be preserved, and that the undeveloped parcel to the west of the property should be acquired to accommodate expansion. There are a lot of other recommendations they had in here, like a stoplight should be on North Lake, like there should be an extra entrance to the west of the existing area into the Avenir property, things of that nature, which are in fact incorporated into the proposal you have seen already tonight. Well, that was in, like I told you, February, I believe I said, of February of 2013. Well, in May, May twenty-ninth of 2013, the RAB Recreation Advisory Board held a public workshop in which citizens were invited into these very chambers to talk about the findings of the original study of the golf course users, and had information and recommendations from the general public. So the information that's being provided, that the public had no participation in this process at all, is a little bit stretched. So as a result of the two charrettes, one charrette, one workshop, staff got busy in putting together a business plan. And in 2015, a business plan was developed. Council members in 2015 were invited out to the golf course individually, where the whole idea of a clubhouse and additional land for the golf course was discussed with them individually. This golf course business plan was discussed with them again at Agenda Reviews, and then brought forth to a council meeting, in which a presentation was made by staff that put this business plan out there for council's consideration when we were talking about the clubhouse and the golf course. At that meeting, I'm pretty sure it was that meeting, the council appointed a special committee. That special committee was Ken Kennerly, Joel Page from PGA National at the time, and Maria Marino. Those people that were very familiar with golf clubhouses and golf courses, in which their design, their charge was to check the design out of the clubhouse and make sure it met some of the standards, obviously, that we were trying to accomplish, and to take a look at the golf, if golf expansion out there was a good idea or not. And there's a report from that group also, very prestigious group of golf-related individuals. Later on, in 2015, in August, staff in their development review committee notes has indicated, prior to the council seeing the final on the master plan, had talked about the, the golf associated in the hundred-and-fifteen acres. And in fact, that was included in the first reading of the master plan, which occurred January sixth in 2016. And those of you that were on the council that time might recall that was the longest council meeting in the history of the city. It took two days to complete, and it was vetted very well, along with all the other projects. On May five, 2016, was the second reading of that master plan, which included the hundred-and-fifteen acres that'll be used for recreation parks land, which we decided later would be a golf course. In the meantime, recently, back in, let's see, March thirteenth of 2019, we got the deed to the land, and it went on a plat book, which came before this council in January fourteenth, 2019. I want to let you know, too, as you saw in your presentation, the city hired a consultant to do the market analysis and do the study, feasibility study for us. There have been plenty of public discussions. There have been plenty of public discussions here in this room. There has been a rumor that tax dollars, ad valorem tax dollars, are going towards this fourteen-million-dollar project. That is not true. You have, will see very shortly that this project will be paid for out of the revenues derived from impact fees and revenues derived from the operation of both operate, both golf operations we have out there now. There has been statements made, and I've seen them, that we're putting public dollars into a private golf course. This is a public golf course on public land. There's no private involvement whatsoever. We will operate the golf course, just the new golf course proposed, if approved, just like we do the existing golf course, because frankly, we're turning, we're, we have revenue over expenditures on an annual basis here. It is projected we will have revenue over expenditures on the new proposed golf course, and we're very confident. And you will see in our proposal presentation by our finance director how that works. It's also been stated that the SRTAX dollars, instead of people understanding that the current construction projects are, are, are general fund ad valorem tax dollars, they are not, except for some of the tax dollars that did go to the tenant's center. Everything else has been spent by SRTAX dollars. Those are not ad valorem dollars, tax dollars. So with that, I just thought it would be best to set the record straight before any discussion ensued, and bringing any misinformation that's out there in the public to this dais, I would rather we dealt with the facts, and I appreciate your indulgence. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Alan, you're up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just some very brief background pertaining specifically to this proposed resolution, as Mr. Ferris just went over in great detail. Tremendous amounts of previous analysis and study was done. But just picking up from the report that was issued last October, that Casey had talked about earlier. Also, staff issued a, an RFP, Request for Proposal for Financing for Revenue Bond, not an ad valorem tax bond, November twelfth of last year. We received four proposals on December tenth, and this resolution would award the financing to the most favorable, favorable proposal. The pre-closing would occur on January nineteenth, and the funding would occur the day after, on January twentieth. Just to give you a brief background about the request that went out, the parameters, that the main parameter, parameters in the proposal that went out, we were looking for a lender that could meet the required fourteen million dollars. We wanted the term loan to be twenty years, beginning October of next year, 2021, so we could budget in our next year, twenty-one, twenty-two budget accordingly. The maximum interest rate we were looking for is not to exceed 2.75% based upon our pro forma of our revenues, for projected revenues, with an annual debt service not to exceed nine-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So we received a total of four proposals. You can see before you Professional Bank, BBNT, which is after their merger with SunTrust, now called Truist, Sterling National Bank, and Capital One. After we reviewed the, all the proposals, it was clear Professional Bank had the best overall proposal, and I'd like to just go through their proposal in detail. As far as the issue amount of fourteen million, they were able to, to meet that requirement, the term loan, beginning October twenty-one, they were able to meet that also. The best part, the interest rate, not to exceed 2.75%, they actually came in at 2.15% with no prepayment penalties. And based upon those terms, the average annual debt service over the twenty years came in at eight-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty dollars. So when we looked at the financing plan, how we would pay this, again, that you can see the debt service, the funding sources are on the right, the revenue from facilities, four-hundred thousand, recreation impact fees, six-oh-eight-five-ten, public facilities, impact fees, sixty-five-four-seventy, for a total estimated cash generated of almost one-million-seventy-four thousand. Minus, minus out the debt, you have a projected surplus of one-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand-six-sixty. And I just wanted to point out that the revenue from facilities, that's very conservative because we did not take into account existing operations. I was only looking at the expansion of facilities. So we feel very comfortable that the revenues generated from these sources will more than cover the annual debt service. And that's basically it. Staff recommends approval of Resolution Seven, twenty, 2021, as presented. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, before we get to questions, I do have a card on this particular top, or no, I have two. I have two cards on this topic. So Mr. Nan- So, Mr. Nafro, you put a card to comment on Resolution 7, 2021. Would you step up to the podium, name an address for the record, please?
They're a hassle, you know, while I'm sitting there. My name is Rob Nafro, 10901 South Gardens Drive, Apartment 105. My comments this evening on this resolution are the following. First of all, thank you to the staff for the wonderful presentation that you've put forth on the Western Golf Expansion, Golf Course Expansion. I believe that having the approval for this bond issuance at this time, and the expenditures are premature, because the citizens of Palm Beach County have not had the time to review the hard work that was put into the staff's efforts. While I understand Mr. Ferris's information going back to 2013, it would have been great if that information was on the website that you can get. I would have looked at it, all of it, but it wasn't. As far as the interest rate and everything that Alan has done, it's wonderful. I mean, you have two banks that want to give a 20-year loan for 2.25% or less. You know, please, I have a mortgage coming up, you know, that I'm going to be buying a house, please, you know, help me, you know, go with that and get the best rate. I don't understand the need for a new 18-hole Par III executive course that is less than a mile and a half away of Sand Hill Crane, right? I don't know what the capacity is of Sand Hill Crane, and if it's overburdened, but that's another issue, okay? If you look at the 18 holes for $14 million, that's $777,000 per hole. It's a lot of money for a second course, especially at Par III. I Googled golf courses for sale today, just for the heck of it. I don't, I don't know anything about buying a golf course, building a golf course, but let me tell you what I found. I found six courses in Florida, ranging from 650K to 2.95 million for sale. That was on one site. Another site had maybe about 700K to 5.6 million. I looked at golf courses for the whole United States. Out of 100, there were only 11 that was in a range from 4 million to 12 million. None of them were $14 million. 89 of them were below 4 million. During a time when local businesses and families are struggling, I find it really hard that our signature city would take on additional debt for a second golf course. I don't know how to resolve that. I don't know how you resolve that. Surely, I thought that other alternatives can be considered, you know, soccer fields, baseball fields, pickleball courts, tennis courts, for 3,000 new families that are going to be in Avenir, as opposed to just another golf course. Or, if you wanted, you can pay down the debt that we may have at a higher interest rate with a lower interest rate right now. That's all I have to say. Please take that into consideration.
All right, thanks, Rob. Commissioner Marino, you're up next, please. Name an address for the record. Or should I be Maria on this one? We'll be Maria.
How about LPGA Class A member Maria Marino on this one?
Right on, I'll write it down.
Maria Marino, 903 Carrick Road, Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, 33418. And I stand in front of you today to talk about an asset, not a liability, and something that will augment the services that we already have, that we already provide. One of the things that we hear about our golf course is the fact that we don't have a really good driving range. So, we're not just putting in a Par III 18-hole golf course. We're actually adding other amenities, including another little bit, another little clubhouse. We're putting in a very good practice facility. And the reason that's important is when you want to bring in, as Charlotte had, I'm sorry, as Casey had in her presentation, possible tournament sites for golf tours, they're not going to look at a facility that has an aqua range to bring in a tournament on an 18-hole regulation golf course. By having the Par III golf course for practice and having the practice facility that has been envisioned, you're actually looking at generating more revenue for Sand Hill Crane itself. This is not a separate golf course. This is not competition for Sand Hill Crane. This is in addition, this is an additional asset for Sand Hill Crane. And we, the City of Palm Beach Gardens, pride ourselves on being on our parks and recreation, and this is just in addition to all of the parks that we have in our city. I do, thanks, Ron, for pointing out the, my help with the clubhouse, and I was on the RAB when this first got, first was discussed. And, you know, there is a lot of discussion about golf courses and the money to maintain them. I thank Alan for his presentation, which shows that everything that we do with this actually adds revenue to our bottom line, and this is not taxpayer dollars that are going to build this facility. So, I'm not going to take all of my three minutes, but as a professional golfer, I understand what it's like to go to a facility that has all of the things that you need to practice. And by having the Par III golf course, you actually have a facility where people can play and practice while you are having a full-scale tournament. And tournaments bring in a lot of extra dollars, a lot of extra revenue, because it's also food and beverage and everything else that goes along with it. So, if we have the ability to have Class A tournaments, we're doing ourselves a favor. Thank you.
Understood, thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to approve Resolution 7, 2021?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Bring it back for discussion. Mark, why don't you start on this one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, since Resolution 13 is really going to be about talking about the golf course, I think we should probably just discuss the whole thing, because if we just talk about the funding, I think it's wise if we can just bring up whatever questions we have regarding golf.
Agreed.
You know, I appreciate the city manager's comments. You know, it was funny, because I remember, we got the agenda last week, we'd been talking about golf there in that particular facility for quite some time, internally, not here on the dais necessarily. I found today, after our six-hour mobility talk with the county in my office, that very map that you pulled out. I remember before I was on council, and when I would sit out in the dais, in the room here, going to a meeting with Avenir at the Hilton over here on PGA Military, and they had their charrette, and they were giving out their maps and their conceptual plans, and on it was golf, the expansion of the golf tournament. And I remember speaking specifically to Rosa Schechter at that event, saying, "Are you guys building a golf course?" And they said, "No, your city staff wanted to have that as an option in the future if it worked out." So, I have that same piece of paper that you just pulled out, and it's sitting at home. And I didn't recognize the Rec Advisory Board discussion, but this was also the parcel that was talked about with the BDB and the city when it was talking about PGA of America prior to them moving. So, there was another added discussion about a nine-hole course at that site. So, you know, when we get these questions from our residents, our first thought is, wow, we need to pay attention, we need to find out. That's our job, is to listen to our residents and try to come up with answers before we make a vote. That's how we educate ourselves. And, you know, everything that we've talked about here today, and I'm grateful to the fact that we've seen these, this type of discussion in the past, made me feel more comfortable that the public has known about it. Whether or not we talked about it here is another story. And that's good. And when you think about the viability of a Par III course, if you think of PGA National, where I live, one of the courses, the Squire Course, is being renovated, and holds one and 18 on that course, which are, you know, combined Par Fives going in opposite directions, they took those out, and they're making a nine-hole Par III, because they see the value in what Par III courses can offer. It's very popular. There's only two of them in the whole county. One is south, and one is north, and, you know, not that many people from our area necessarily go there, but they're extremely popular, the Palm Beach Par III and the Jupiter Dunes Course. So, I can't see this project being anything but extremely successful, because, you know, yes, it's for beginners, but it's also for the person that just wants to go out and play. I don't think people really are going to question the value of the course, and I hope they don't, because the dollars and cents, we'll review here in a second, are pretty obvious, in my opinion, because it's going to get tremendous usage. You know, there were some comments on the Nextdoor app, and I just wanted to address some of them, because I think it's important that we make sure that we recognize the questions that people are asking. One was a little bit disappointing. They said, "This course will be no competition with the Village of North Palm Beach Beautiful Public Course." Well, you know, I do love the North Palm Beach Public Golf Course, but I would think that anybody that's been out to Sand Hill Crane and looked at the golf course, it's a beautiful course, it's extremely well-maintained, it gets continued positive responses from everybody that goes out there. It may not have the same challenging holes, it's not a Nicholas course, but it's a beautiful course, and this will only enhance that. Some other talks about why would you spend $14 million? Well, we're talking about how we're not really spending $14 million. We are investing $14 million in a way to improve the city. Why we don't build soccer fields or tennis courts? Well, Avenir is building a beautiful community center that's going to have tennis courts, pickleball courts, and basketball courts, et cetera. And we already have a world-class Gardens, North District Park, and baseball right out here, and football and everything else. So, we already have those things in the core of our city. Let's enhance the golf course where it is. Someone else asked questions about renovating City Hall and everything else that we use. Are we using these facilities? And I think you can look at our tennis facility, go to the soccer fields, go to PGA Park, all of our facilities are being used quite often. And then someone else asked about some outdoor facilities. You know, we don't have direct access necessarily to the water outside of the marina. But, you know, today, after that long meeting and what have you, I got on my bike, and I took a nice bike ride around PGA, and I went out to Sand Hill Crane Park, and I saw someone fishing, and some other gentleman and his kid was riding their bike, going up towards Riverbend Park, another person in a ski boat, of all things, which I didn't think was allowed in that canal, but there was a ski boat that was being launched in Sand Hill Crane Park along the canal.
Not anymore.
Yeah, I don't know who it was, and I don't want to say, but, but, but just to say that, you know, as Chelsea mentioned earlier, we've got, you know, we've got so many outdoor opportunities that are not necessarily structured recreational opportunities in the city that we don't necessarily know about, but they are there, and they are easily found. And I'd encourage people to find them, because they are wonderful. So, I appreciate all of the comments. I am grateful for them, because it helps us step back and think. But being here for 20 years, sitting in that meeting, and I remember that was a two-night meeting, I think Marcy, I think you were the mayor at the time, and we had to go until 11:30 on Thursday, and then you had to go back on Friday to finish, and I probably was half asleep for most of it, because I didn't have to really pay attention that hard. But, I do remember that meeting, and I do remember the conversation. So, when people said this wasn't discussed in the past, I knew there was discussion about it, I knew there was a lot of input that was going back and forth. I appreciate the confirmation of that, because my memory isn't that good anymore. But I think this is going to be a gem. I think this is going to get a ton of activity, and I think the people that go there are going to be extremely excited. So, that's all I have to say about golf. I'll let you guys discuss, and then I do have some questions for Alan. Thank you.
Go ahead, guys, whoever wants to speak up.
Like Mark, I was not on council at the time, but I do remember that two-day meeting. And something else that came out of that meeting, besides the decision to donate the 115 acres to the city, is the 2,500 acres that went into conservancy and is allowing for all those trails and the preservation of nature out there. There was a comment on the neighborhood site as well about, this should be left as green space, it should be left to nature, and there are 2,500 acres right next to this that went to that. From the beginning, that 115 acres was slated for recreation, and as Ron pointed out, golf was the major consideration from the beginning for that recreational parcel because of where it was located. It made the most sense for that to be the parcel that Avenir agreed to give us because of where it was located. This is an expansion of a public facility that is reaching near capacity with 42,000 rounds. We are not going to be able to accommodate our residents at our public golf course, which is currently recognized as one of the best in South Florida, if not farther. It provides a different product. It's not the same type of golf course, the Par III, the driving range, the different capabilities that this will have. It is an extension and an expansion that is not the same. The need for this has been documented. I mean, the studies have been done, and the needs have been documented. Now, I'm not a golfer. I keep threatening that I'm going to learn, and I'm going to come out there, Casey, and do that, but golfing is a big sport among our residents and the tourists that come to our area. And our existing public facility has been a major success. We haven't neglected the rest of the families and the rest of the residents that don't play golf or don't play golf all of the time. Our parks and playground areas are first class. Our recreation center, money's been allocated to do a complete revamp of the pool in the recreation center for our families. We've approved, well, we're looking towards the establishment of the indoor recreation center at the North County District Park, which is an amazing park. We've overhauled the entire baseball complex. We've got world-class training going on there, things that you don't find in other communities that are open to all of our residents. So, it's not always about golf, but this time, it's important that it is about golf. Staff's done their due diligence on this. The Western communities are going to be growing. Westlake is out there as well. They do not have plans for a golf facility. The only one that is being considered right now for Avenir will be a private club for one community. So, the rest of their residents will need a place to go, and we also have IBIS right across the way. So, with interest rates what they are now, I agree that this is an amazing time and an amazing investment for the city to make. And also to clarify one more point, and Alan, you can disagree with me or correct me if I'm wrong, but the city did retire its debt last year, so the city has no debt.
That's correct. We retired all the general obligation debt last year.
Those are great words to end on. Chelsea?
So, I was elected in March, and COVID had arrived. I grew up here. I've been here most of my life, except for a few years for college and things like that. So, I grew up playing golf. When I got into office, the one thing I didn't expect in the middle of COVID was the 9-gillion emails I got from the angry golfers. So, people were upset about COVID, but they were mostly upset about golf in Palm Beach Gardens. And that is, those are our residents. These are the people that we represent. And that was the first email I opened as a city council member, was about golf. So, golf does matter here, and I don't want to reiterate what my fellow council members have said about every other wonderful thing that we have here. But I will say that, as you can see, we are transparent. Mr. Ferris has decades of information. I even knew before I ran for office that that was going to be a golf course, because we just kind of like knowing you live here. Every time I went by it, the staff at Sand Hill Crane talked about it, the golfers talked about it. It's been part of the plan for a long time. And being told we're not transparent, when I know that everybody sitting up here spends hours every day on the phone, texting, emailing, and communicating all the time, and sharing information in our history, and the Palm Beach Gardens website is a treasure trove of information. So, I do recommend always just give us a call and reach out. The city also has a AAA bond rating, which is part of why we were able to get a 2.15% interest rate, which is extraordinary. If you, if you look around at what we've done during COVID, we gave small business relief. We have a CBDG grant coming up. We've, are updating Septic all around the area. We give gift cards for food to our residents. We are taking care of our residents, and our residents want golf also, and we're in a position where we can invest in that. I also want to add that I bothered Casey, and she graciously answered me with a three-page document about the sustainability efforts that are taking place currently on the golf course, and my, I don't really have a question. My knowledge will be that they'll continue to do those. We do need a light there. All my friends at Bay Hill and West, I know that's something that we all have in our minds, and I know our city's working on that, too. in our minds, and I know our city's working on that, too. So I appreciate how much people care about our city. I love that Leslie Knope quote that when people yell at you at a city council meeting, it's actually them caring loudly. So thank you for caring. We're doing a good job, and we're here and we're communicating. So always feel free to reach out. And I do support this. And thank you, our commissioner, for being here and giving us your history and supporting us as we move forward.
All right. Well, I'll make a closing comment after there's any other discussion with staff. Do you have anybody else for? You guys are done. Okay. I know when I ran for council, you know, there was a growth issue, and everything was growing. I mean, look around us and how much, how far the city has come over the last 10, 15 years. Avenir already had legs long before I got here. So it was an issue of, now that we did all this growth, and we've got all these people living here, what do we do about the children? You know, what do we do about the families? How do we keep them from going elsewhere? And it was, it was kind of what I campaigned on. And then when I got here, I believe Mayor Tinsley was either mayor or right at going to be mayor. Maria and I came in together. And what we did is we almost pivoted, and even though, you know, through the leadership of the previous council and especially our city manager and his staff, the city turned out awesome. Now what do we do with it, right? So what we did is we almost stopped the growth. We have to support Avenir and its vision, and it was already moving when we got here. And this council has approved some pocket communities along the way. We try and attract technology businesses that will bring jobs in and bring families in. And then we have the children. So what we did is we built, how many acres, Ron, soccer fields? Anybody? Eighty-four acres, or eighty-four acres of soccer fields, the pickleball. At that time, we hadn't did the ground opening for the clubhouse at Sand Hill. And then we did the Joe Russo facility right at the beginning. That was like the door to the vision of what North District Park became. So they either come here or they go somewhere else. And Palm Beach Gardens houses everything, and it's not just a golf course here, a tennis center here. It's the best of the best. I mean, our tennis facility just got recognized nationally. Our golf got recognized nationally. Our, no doubt, our kids are coming from all over. I don't know. Our baseball is the world, I want to say freaking series, from all over the United States. And what's that do? That brings revenue to our corridor, which filters out into the community. So, you know, this par three is just a vision, a continued vision of what Palm Beach Gardens is. So, you know, I've been working for the city my whole adult life, so I've had the pleasure to watch it grow in front of my eyes. And, you know, as the mayor, I do one thing. I don't engage in unnecessary chaos. And when these emails come along that are misinformed, and I don't know where these particular people are getting their information from, especially when they're, I take it as an insult because it was only a month or two ago, we openly said, I think I may have, we're not using any tax dollars on building this golf course. So this particular council, especially Mark, who's always looking to lower taxes, we doubled down when it comes to being transparent to our community and our responsibility to our constituents for not misusing their money. So when I see these things come across as emails, a couple of negative emails, I don't do next door, back door, whatever it is. I just simply swipe left. So I just simply swipe left. So whoever's in the audience, my fellow council members, do not engage in unnecessary chaos. If someone wants to call me, my phone is right there. And I'm going to vote for it because I want our community to live and play here like they already do. This council's full-time. Maria and Marcy were full-time. Mayor Primoroso, thank you for coming in full-time. So it's hard to outwork a council member. Anyway, hearing no further discussion in this, all in favor?
Well, hold on.
Oh, 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 sorry.
We wanted to talk about the golf and the conception about the golf, but Alan, can we just go over some specifics about the funding of it all before we move? Because this is resolution seven that we're still on.
Correct.
Correct. So, I thought you were waving the white flag there.
I have an over-under of 740. You've got two seconds.
I just, I just wanted to make sure everyone understands, and from my own personal understanding as well, recreation impact fees and public facilities impact fees, that's coming primarily from the Western development.
Primarily, yes, sir.
And I think, you know, when we first hear $14 million and you think, impact fees, are they really going to come, become available, given the economics of the future and what have you? You know, we all read the papers. We're all seeing how many people are moving into town, how quickly homes are being built out in the Avenir, and units are being sold. I hope that I share the optimism that the Western communities will develop as scheduled. I know you don't have a magic ball, but that's making, I think we've seen some evidence that there's not going to be a sudden stop in home buying in the West.
We're not seeing that currently. As you know, last year, we had just a record year as far as permits. In fact, we had an economic update by Dr. Fishkein just this week, and he even mentioned how Palm Beach Gardens seems to be like, you know, bucking the trend as far as certainly nationally, even here locally, but, you know, continuing to see the permit activity and the sales and, you know, the sale price very, very strong. So we don't see any, you know, current slowdown.
And so there really wouldn't be any reason to think that those impact fees wouldn't be collected on schedule?
No, and this is, again, is a 20-year projection. So a lot, you know, a lot can happen in 20 years, but based upon current levels of activity, you know, we think it's very attainable. And again, this is primarily, almost exclusively, impact fees we're projecting from Avenir. We still have other impact fees that we collect on other areas, too, that we're not really factoring in to the full extent here.
And Casey, you were very good at giving us your facility revenue projections. So I don't have any question that it's going to have adequate usage. So that's all I got. Thank you.
All right. So I'm not going to jump the gun and say I don't hear anything else. So I want to make sure you guys are comfortable on this because it's something that's going to service our community forever. So if we have any more discussion on resolution seven 2021, we're going to talk about it. If not, we're going to vote on it. So how, are you guys comfortable? Chelsea, you good?
Yes.
Okay, I'm great. All right. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution carries four zero. Resolution 13 2021. Patty, would you read the title?
Resolution 13 2021, a resolution the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting a policy and plan for the expenditure of the proceeds from the public improvement bonds, series 2021, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Max Loman, would you please?
This resolution is resolution number seven. You may recall that when we've previously issued revenue bonds, we've issued a companion resolution much like this, that basically it's administrative really in nature. It just authorizes the city manager to do what we need to do to expend the funds and move forward with the plan to buy the golf course. As you just voted on, the revenue from the par three course is pledged to repay that bond, so we need to build it. And this is what this allows the city manager to move forward with.
Very well, thank you. All right, Mr. Nanfro, I can't see you. Could you stand up, please? You don't need to come to the podium unless you need to, because it seems like your presentation in resolution seven, kind of like ours, kind of encompassed everything. So if your comments are going to be identical to what you had already said, will you agree that you don't need to speak again? Or would you, I mean, out of respect for you, I'll give you another three minutes, but if we're just going to hear, don't raise taxes and stuff? Yeah, come on up then. Go ahead and start over then. Name and address for the record. Thanks, man.
Rob Nanfro, 10 901 South Garden Drive, apartment 105. All I'm going to say is, the resolution, even though it sounds like it's housekeeping in nature, it's very far-fetched when you just say, okay, you know, Mr. Ferris, you have total rule over what goes on with this project. Project of $14 million takes a lot of different moving parts. So I would hope that the council gets involved with milestones to make sure that things are going well. And it's not just you hear the bad things, but you hear the good things as they go along also. Okay? Because, you know, you want to keep abreast of that situation. As you know, I'm not a fan of the vote on the last one. Okay? That's my opinion. I just think that it would have been better if Avenir built themselves, and we can collect the tax dollars on that. I'm a tax guy by nature, so that's why I'm saying that. Just going back to all the information that you have, Mr. Ferris, going back to 2013?
Or address the council direct, please.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Or myself. Don't call out an individual person.
Okay.
Thank you.
Council?
Anything you want. Just don't call out an individual.
No, no problem. Any information that you have that's on an issue? People are getting upset, myself included, and saying there's no transparency in government. When you bring stuff up now of something that happened in 2013, 2015, 2016, 2019, people have very short memories. And for you to expect that someone's going to remember what somebody said in 2013 without putting something on the website, because you have it in front of you now, so I don't understand on how that doesn't get done. I've seen resolutions that the council puts up that are 300 or 400 pages. To not do that with this issue, when you saw all the chatter that's gone on, I'm kind of surprised that you let it get that far. But that's my, again, my opinion. So thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Rob. Appreciate it, man.
You're welcome.
All right. Can I get a motion and second to approve resolution 13 2021?
I would love to make the motion to approve resolution 13 2021.
I will second it. I'll bring it back for discussion. Unless we're going to carry over our comments from seven to 13, we can move on.
Carry over.
Okay, understood.
Rochelle?
Nope.
Hearing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution carries four zero. Resolution 14 2021. Patty, would you read the title, please?
Resolution 14 2021, a resolution the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida prohibiting the use of polystyrene products on public property, directing city administration to negotiate no polystyrene provisions in applicable city contracts, and encouraging all residents and retail businesses within the city to reduce or eliminate the use of polystyrene products, providing an effective date and further purposes.
I actually made a mistake. I was going to call it resolution Chelsea 14 2021, but slipped. All right, Max, would you?
Yeah, if you recall, at your previous meeting, you directed me to draft a resolution that would direct the city manager to adopt a policy to ban the use of polystyrene products on public property within the city. And that's what this does. It also allows, affords the city manager the discretion to waive that prohibition in limited circumstances when he feels that, when he deems it prudent. We discussed with all of you in the past about the one, really one remaining area where there's still polystyrene used on the city, and it's a, is a small seniors group that gathers over at the rec center, and it's because of their coffee. We've discussed it, the coffee in the paper cups is, it deteriorates the paper cups, and it burns their hands, and so they've used it. Other than that, we don't really use polystyrene anywhere, and we're actively investigating in alternative containers for them. The golf course has already eliminated the use of polystyrene in any of the public areas. The only area that remained to be used was in the restaurant, and they are actually actively investigating an alternative product to use as well as now. And again, this is largely geared more towards educating the public, and we'll be informing them of this prohibition when they come in for permits to use city facilities. And when people show up at our facilities, whether it be our parks or our recreational facilities, and we notice they have polystyrene, we'll educate them on the fact that it's prohibited so that they know that they can't use it. And that's basically it. Otherwise, as I said, when we talked about doing an ordinance or something like that, I mean, you do code enforcement, start citing people for the use of polystyrene, it would be a bit problematic. I think, once you directed me to go this way, I think this is the best way from a policy perspective to effectuate your desired results in a meaningful and deliberate, but also reasonable fashion.
Understood. Thank you. Rob, would you step up to the podium, please? Unless there's some sort of legal reason, we will concede that we know where you live.
That's good or bad.
You have 30 seconds.
No problem. Thank you. Comments on this resolution are as follows. The background, the language in the background of the resolution, quite scary. The city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens finds that polystyrene products pose an environmental hazard to the health, safety, and welfare of the residents and visitors of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, as well as negatively impacting water quality and surrounding wildlife. That was a rough one. Last meeting in December, I remember that this was discussed, and I remember that some of the council members even said that this was legislating the usage of certain types of cups by our constituents was a little far-reaching. I agree with that, wholeheartedly. To write this type of resolution, okay, I think, you know, it's a little far-fetched. Not even far-fetched, it's just overreaching. I think if you want to educate the public about proper recycling practices and placing more recycling bins in town near our facilities would be less intrusive than making an actual, you know, resolution with the city's authoritative powers. In the end, you know, I have faith that the people that use the cups on the golfing, you know, on the golf course, and the rest of our citizens can really dispose of the cups in a really proper fashion. I don't think you need a law to tell somebody to do that. And not even a law, but a resolution to stop them. If so many, if really there's a low percentage of people that are doing this, or that the use is, and you're looking for another way, why would you put a resolution to make it scary? So.
All right, thanks. Can I get a motion and second to approve resolution 14 2021?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'm going to second it.
Resolution 14 2021.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You do it. You do it.
It's not mine.
And just for the record, as you got a motion and a second, if I might interject, polystyrene's not recyclable, and it does not biodegrade. That's why the council decided to ban it, because it's not like a regular plastic where it can be reused. It also talks about in the resolution about how it degrades into micro particles and gets ingested by wildlife and marine life. And that was the reason, if I remember correctly, that you all unanimously directed me to draft this. So, thank you.
All right. So let's get our seconds correct. I have a motion from Rochelle. Chelsea has a second. We're going to bring it back for discussion.
Yeah. First, I want to thank Chelsea for bringing this back up. The council had discussed about a year ago. Looking at this, things have changed in that year. More information has come out. The city has started, had started at the time to wean itself off of using these products, and the timing was right. And I commend you for bringing that up again.
Go ahead.
So I just wanted to just review some emails we received in support from Mirasol Country Club and their environmental committee, a wonderful group of a nonprofit called Surface 71, who have been, it's a group of teenagers, actually, from our local high schools, who started a nonprofit. And they've actually been going over to Prosecco in Sand Hill Crane and showing the owners different products they can use, which I thought was really, really wonderful. We've also received encouragement and support from the Palm Beach County Office of Resilience, Oceana, on and on and on. So this is something that happens in municipalities. It is what is, it's part of setting policy. It is a resolution and the opportunity to educate our residents about styrofoam, which causes cancer, is a great opportunity. And I'm so proud that
causes cancer, is a great opportunity, and I'm so proud that our city's sustainability efforts are extraordinary, so much so that this is probably, you know, just one small thing that's on a giant hill of sustainability that takes place in Palm Beach Gardens. There's a sustainability webpage available, and it's been up since October, so if you're curious about some of the initiatives already taking place in the city, this is kind of like frosting on the cake. So I'm honored to finish what you guys started. Several other councils have wanted to do something like this for a long time, and I want to especially thank our city manager, Ann Max, for taking the time to go through this. We are a city manager form of government, which means that we set policy, and our city manager runs the city. And for him to take the time when he's dealing with COVID and injections and fire towers and 9,000 other things to talk about coffee cups?
Par three golf course.
And a par three and a golf course and all that other stuff. Thank you so much for taking the time. I am honored to be a part of this team. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, Mark?
Well, you know, the purpose of making it a resolution, not an ordinance, was that we didn't want to police it, so it was all understood to be the right way. I'm just curious to see what you're going to come up with next on a sustainability policy, policy discussion next month.
Thanks for that, Mark. Is that it? All right, so I was the one that was like, kind of like, kind of like play golf. You hit and drag, Carl, because I wasn't really on board with this because it was the first time we spoke about it. So I didn't have a minute to absorb it, other than the conversation and my personal knowledge on how much styrofoam do I think we really have in Palm Beach Gardens, and are we addressing a problem where there's no problem? So what I do is, you know, I go back, you know, I'm super well-known on the pub, at the Hood Road Publix there. It's kind of cool. Council member, oh. So, you know, I talk to my constituents randomly, and I bounce things off people that might be in some of the bigger communities, like Frenchmans, and I ask people that know more than I do about styrofoam cups. And it seems like the greater community, even though it's a baby step, it's still a, it's kind of like house cleaning in one aspect, but it's still a step in the right direction. So even though I might have been a little adversarial with our, and we kind of debated that one, you know, I got educated, and I feel comfortable with supporting cleaning up Palm Beach Gardens, even if it's just a little bit. Because I did say, I don't see any cups along the lakes and stuff like that, but it is within our community. And if it's something ever so small to make this community better, whether the language is scary or not, you know, I'm going to support it because the community supports it. That's our job, and that's all I have to say on it. So Chelsea, I thank you for bringing this up and shoving it down my throat because now I like it.
We're proud of you.
Yeah?
We're proud of you.
Aw, thank you. Who's, okay. All right, so hearing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution fourteen, 2021 passes. I'll just hit that for the fun of it. Items for council action, discussion, and items for interest, please say there's none.
I just have a real quick.
Oh, here we go.
I do, too.
No, no, very brief. I didn't pull it from the consent. The July, the July meeting, I understand why we're moving it to July 15th, and I don't object to it, but I probably will not be here. So just letting everybody know now that I'm not bailing on whatever piece of information might be coming for a vote.
All right, go ahead, guys.
I'll just make mine really quick. This month, I've had the opportunity to tour our fire tower, which is, I'm going to geek out. It was so amazingly cool, you guys. It's right off of Richard Road. You can't miss it. Thank you, Chief Prior, for taking the time. And I, I'm so proud of our city, and I know that all of our safety is going to be incrementally helped by this, and the opportunity for our recruits and for our own fire department to be able to train on it. Our service level is already amazing, and it's going to be even better. So, and we're sharing it with other folks, too. So it's not just for us. And I also had the opportunity, again, geeking out about stormwater management, because anyone who knows anything about local government, you have to understand how very, very important where water goes is. And where our water goes has changed. And I'll make this super quick. When I was a kid, and it would rain, our cars would wash away if you left them on the side of the road on Burns Road. And Mr. Ferris and I talk about this quite a bit, so when he came along in 2000, he kept on hearing about our flooding issues. And when I toured our stormwater, the first place they took me to show me what a success our city is with stormwater management was exactly where the cars used to wash away. So I found a lot of irony in that, and I will find a picture of a washaway car. So I just wanted to let you guys know, you can find information about both the fire tower and our stormwater management system on the city's website if you're curious. Thank you.
May I suggest you do in the Seacoast?
Do that next, okay.
It's unbelievable what's going on under the city. It's a whole different level of geeking out. So RIM, RIM, you guys got to go. Because I did it with RIM, and I know it may not be open to the general public, but to understand the infrastructure of the city and why the water moves one way or another, and to see our facilities, you're kind of like, you know, you see a water, it's not just a water tower. I mean, it's running all over the place. So I geeked out about that, using your words, several years ago, and it was, one of the best things I did as a new council member, to just understand what's going on and what it takes to get water to your tap when everybody just turn it on and you just get water. So do that one. It's super cool.
Especially as the representative to the county's water task force, that would be a great thing for me to do. And I didn't know that, I did not even know that it was possible, so thank you.
Get with RIM over there, or I guess probably through Ron, they're probably on speed dial, and then, sorry if I just did it, whatever, but, you know. So anyway, anything else, guys? We have a city manager?
The fact that you just said that, it just shows me that this council, we don't just, like, this is a full-time investment. I mean, to the point where we're geeking out about where water come from, you know, comes from in our city.
And I'm not a geek.
Thank you for sharing that. You're not a geek.
At all.
No, I was a geek, so it's okay.
All right, Mark, if you're good. Rochelle, you good? City attorney report, please.
No report, sir.
Meeting adjourned.